Hey, I'd like to call the February meeting to order. Can everyone please rise for the pledge?
We pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of quick things. Did you want, well, I guess we'll wait for committee. Okay. First of all, Ann and I went to the DCD study update at Shrewsbury Township. We have, everybody is participating now. Glen Rock, Relbrae, New Freedom, Shrewsbury Burn, Shrewsbury Township are all participating. And all of the fire and EMS services for our area are participating in this study. It should take, I think, what, they said, three to six months? So it's three to six months to gather the information. It's a it's a data-driven study, so we're very excited to get the information back when they're done. Last meeting, we approved getting some water flow check valves in, and a couple of council members have said that we're going to get them in, they're going to be in stock. You know, Donnie will have them, but the, there is going to be a charge, I believe. Is that what everyone thought? That we were just going to keep them here?
It was going to be free if they returned the old one.
Okay. Is that what we decided?
That's right.
Okay.
They have a couple of weeks, maybe, a couple of weeks to turn the old one, so the plumber's got to take it out, put the new one in. But then, you know, once they have it, I mean, grow off this here. I mean, it should take, after they have the old one out, it should take two weeks to get it.
Right, okay.
It's going to take two, it's going to take two weeks to get a plumber out there.
Okay, so just for clarification, then. And wanted to thank Donnie and his crew, the public works crew. And we also had, what, two of the guys from the sewage plant were driving the plow trucks this time around. We got another one coming, I guess, next, this next week or this weekend. So we all wanted to give a round of applause, appreciation for Donnie and his crew. Also wanted to thank Dave for working with the ice sculpture people. Dave Reisdorf turned the lights on for the on and off, for the light sculptures that were here along the rail trail.
Until they were wrecked.
Until, yeah.
Two of them were torn down.
Oh, really? Five gandals torn down and?
I'm guessing, yeah. The one that was over by the boost and the one that was here at the playground.
All right, that's all I had. Brings us to the consent agenda for February.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion to accept.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda?
Do you have a question? What's the JP Environmental 242?
JP Environmental, it's doing your de-watering project.
A part of that project, then?
That's the original.
But that's, that's also reimbursed by?
Well, yeah, 60.72% comes to us from Shrewsbury. And that's also who did the corrosion study.
Yeah, Evan, Dad, I went down and did that a couple of days after they had the de-watering startup. They were taking it pretty nice. They had it running, they, you know, just punched the side of some peaboggie, but I mean, it was doing very well. Nice looking stuff.
Having the equipment.
That was the water. This is true.
Yeah, and again, this, that upgrade did not increase the, any sewage capacity. It's just replacing equipment that was failing. Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, that brings us to public comment. And Pat, would you like to go first?
Hi, please, thanks. Hi, there's a microphone if you like. He thinks I have a big mouth. New Freedom Lions Club, I'm here for, as First Lake President, Secretary. I don't know if anybody knows, but the New Freedom Linus Club is disbanding. They will no longer be a Linus Club effective June 30th, 2021. They've already closed all their books and everything, so we are taking over, the Lions Club is taking over their Christmas vendor show in November, as they always do. We also want to have a Backdoor Olympics, which I think we're going to use the community center for. Got canceled last year because of COVID. We're hoping to have it in the fall, if the community center's back good. At our meeting on Tuesday, one of the Linuses, Deb McKnight, had stated that in their contract, they get a two and a half free use of the community center. The Lions were wondering if the council would consider giving that to the Lions Club, because we only have one and a half uses. So if we're taking over their craft and vendor show, we're probably do a bingo and do our Backdoor Olympics, we'd like to be considered for two and a half free times if the council can just fix it back. Since we are a community service project, all of our proceeds go back to the community. So that's for that.
All right. Can we talk about that for a little bit, then? The two and a half free uses is associated with them renting the community center, and obviously, they're not going to be renting the community center. But I, what I would suggest is that we just give them a total of three, which would be one for the Lions and two for the Linuses. And that should get you through what you need to. And if you need an additional use, by all means, come back to council and say, hey, we found something else we want to do. I'm sorry, I turned off my microphone when you were talking. If you have something else that you want to do, just come back to council and let us know.
All right, thanks.
So if there's more discussion, we can have it, or if somebody wants, we could have a motion for three uses for the Lions in total.
I'll make a motion that there are three uses for the Lions Club.
Thinking and Bruno both seconded it.
That assumes that it's open for use.
Obviously, yeah, yeah. Yeah, now it's not, now would not be a good time. Okay.
All right, thank you.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Thanks for coming. I know, I know it's. All right, Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped our public comment. Public comment on items on the agenda. Is someone here from Mason Dixon? Okay. There's no one here from Mason Dixon. I'll tell you what they need. Mason Dixon has a shed at Hayntown, and they wanted to move it to someplace, probably Weathersfield would be the best bet. And Todd is of the, Todd at Shrewsbury Township is of the opinion that if the shed is tried to be moved, it's probably going to fall apart, because they're not really made to be put in place and moved again and whatnot. So if it does, obviously, it's, it doesn't, doesn't much matter. But they would like approval to put the shed at Weathersfield. I don't think we have a problem with them just setting it on the ground, but they might want to put down some stones. So, Donnie, did you have a problem with, I mean, they'll have, you'll have to mow around it, try to put it in a spot, even, maybe even close to the parking lot or on the parking lot? Where do you have a spot that you would?
I'd just put it on the grass, you know, somewhere there off the parking lot.
Put it on the parking lot?
Well, no, put it off the parking lot.
But it's close to, close to the parking lot?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So typically, they, they put a path down, and I'm under the assumption that that's, so it'll stay level?
Yeah, normally, you level it out, and, I mean, they, they're certainly welcome to do that.
Is that something that we should require?
I think it probably would actually be required. They would have to get a permit.
Yeah.
We can waive the fee on the permit. And so, you want to put a, put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make, make a motion for Mason Dixon to use Weathersfield with the, with an appropriate base. And waive the, the fee for?
Fee for the permit?
Correct.
I second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just, who is Mason Dixon that you're going to give them a shed?
It's Mason Dixon Soccer.
It's Mason Dixon Soccer.
Oh, the people?
They, they need the shed to put goals and lining, field lining.
And they're the people who use the soccer field already?
Right, yes.
It's just, it just says Mason Dixon Shed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what it, I apologize for that.
Okay.
Could I ask Donnie a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, did you want to?
Donnie, are there going to, is there going to be additional stones left over down at Marge Goodfell that you're using, or that they're using for the new water lines?
There's a possibility.
Heaven knows, they're down there with a bulldozer every morning at seven o'clock, hanging away.
It's, it's possible there might be some. They're going to probably, just about to do their job. I'm sure. They said whatever they have left over, they're going to spread out down there.
Is there a possibility that maybe we could approach Berquentine and see if they have extra?
It hasn't been, I picked the building.
That's not Berquentine. Well, no, but Berquentine or the, the company that's doing that, I would assume they're probably going to have some left over, rather than see them truck it away. If, if we could take it up there and, you know. I think what Donnie's saying is they're not going to truck it away. They're just going to spread it on our parking lot for us.
If I know that they're going to have some extra down there, I was telling them to leave a little pile, and then we'll get it to them for that.
Okay, that was my thought, to keep them from the expense of having a left by stone.
Yeah, you only need like, like six or eight inches of stone to accept ability on, so it shouldn't take that much.
So they got, the contractor probably has two kinds of stone, right? He's got big, the bedding stone, and the two RC for the back door. So it would probably be the clean stone, bedding stone.
Okay, anything else?
I, I asked Ryan if he could amend the, the motion about the shed, and maybe this goes for the other ones, too, that they'll provide the insurance for it, so, you know, something happens to it, it's our responsibility. And they'll do the maintenance on it, you know, if these paint fall down or something that, you know, that they don't expect to burn.
And, and removal, whatever its life expectancy is, yeah?
That's all.
How, how do we figure out what the insurance on that is?
It doesn't matter, they would just have to carry it. They can get like a renter's insurance thing. We're not going to provide it, they're just going to, yeah.
All right, then I'd like to amend my original motion and, and then to provide the insurance on it.
Okay.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
And removal and maintenance?
Correct. I'll second.
You reseconded, okay. All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just request that the council members use the microphones. Currently, we wouldn't be able to talk, it's just a little hard with masks on especially. It's a little harder.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. SYC?
Do you want me to use the microphone, or can you guys hear me?
You can, you can just yell loud enough if you want.
So we are requesting to be able to put in a shed at the Veterans Field at the coop. Purpose of the shed would be to store a lawn mower size tractor to be used to help with the upkeep of the field itself. We would be building, the expense of the shed would be theirs. Eight by eight footprint, no higher than nine foot, depending on the location. I have the ability to use, don't use conventional building materials, wood and such. And then depending on the location, the roof would be sloped, you know, if it was, if it was standalone, roof would be sloped, so that, you know, any rainwater or any snow would fall off the sides, or pitched off the building if it happened to be against the building. We didn't, we left placement open, the council. The person that would be in charge of actually building the shed requested, if possible, possibly just putting it into a stone, or a stone area, dump first base side of the field, the stone area before you hit the grass, if you go past the telephone pole, the light pole.
So just basically be outside the fence?
Yeah.
Kind of where you had the tractor before?
Sort of.
Yeah.
So basically, so that, that way, we wouldn't have, nobody would have to worry about, you know, cutting around it, or just, you know, there could already be a stone pad.
And you, yeah, you put the stone pad down, there wouldn't be any grass problems or anything? Same, is that okay, Donnie?
That's a perfect place for it.
Okay. Same caveats, insurance, maintenance, and removal whenever you're done with it? A motion for that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, if you'd.
Okay.
No session?
Same motion, yeah. All right, any further discussion on that?
I guess the one question would be, just to make sure that we're talking about the same location, should I, to whom should I communicate to ensure that we're using the appropriate location?
Probably Donnie, or you could call the borough office and ask for? Yeah, you're, you're going to need a permit, although it's, it's less than 10 by 10, so. Okay, yeah, you'll, you'll need a permit, and there won't be any cost to it, but it'll just show where it's going to be located. That way, there won't be any, oh, wow, you got to move it five feet or something.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, and then?
I'll take the, the one for the lacrosse shed, so approached by SYC Lacrosse. It's odd that three requests for sheds would come in. But they are requesting a shed that would be approximately 10 by 15. That's the, the size of their current storage unit that they, they have at a facility here on Constitution. They're, they're basically looking at it as a way to save money. They're not sure if they're going to have a season this year. The storage unit itself costs $1,200 a year, so they're, they're requesting a location somewhere within the borough property for use, similar items. They didn't have a specific location, which is somewhere where they could put it.
Donnie, I was going to ask you, is there a place anywhere near the maintenance building that would be, because they don't need it near a field of any particular kind. They're strictly using it for storage.
Correct.
Because they're having, with COVID, they haven't had a season, and they don't have the money to pay for storage. So would there be a place near the maintenance building that they could just plop down a 10 by 15 shed?
If they want to go on the outside of the fence, like right out past the gate out here?
Yeah.
Along the fence, I mean, something like that, had to be leveled up, because it kind of curves down there, but they could do something like that. It wasn't building against the fence and, you know, standing on stuff, and then it wouldn't be in the way of anything.
Yeah, same thing, right. Okay.
You said 10, 10 by?
10 by 15.
Yeah.
It's a little bit larger than?
Yeah, that would.
Okay. So basically, the same thing, same caveats, insurance, maintenance, and removal. I think it'd be a little more secure there, because it's near the police station, so it should be, it should be fairly secure. So, did you want to say motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion with the same criteria as, as the previous requests.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? All opposed? Or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, three sheds and one maintenance, pretty good. Are there, is there any other public comment on agenda items? Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I have had a couple of complaints from residents out on Constitution. The repairs to the water lines, apparently, they feel that the trucks, the larger trucks, semis going back out there are actually shaking their houses, and they've sent me pictures of cracks in their walls. Tanya and I did talk about that. We think it has to do with foundations, but they're wondering whether this is something that would be reportable to the company that is doing the repairs, borough, or their homeowners. I mean, I saw one house. Right on Constitution. Apparently, the trucks are hitting those, you know, and it's actually shaking their houses, and they're getting cracks in their walls and their foundations. I told them I'd bring it up to council and get back with them as to what.
I think they would probably have to, at a minimum, take pictures, and I don't know how you would prove it wasn't a pre-existing crack.
I see a solicitor come in.
Yeah, and I think it's, causation is tough to say, this is the truck that's caused or the activity that caused it versus other trucks and things like that. And, and if in fact they believe it's the trucking company that's at issue, it's incumbent upon them to put them on notice and say they have a private cause of action against due for damage to my property. It's also a state road as well, so I don't know if it's all a PennDOT issue versus a borough issue. But they're saying it's a condition of that road that's causing the damage.
Yeah, I understand, but I, I also understand we took on the responsibility to repave that. Is that not correct, Tanya?
Yeah, that's where the word is civilized and put in. Of course, they just have cold patching and patch.
Yeah, the cold patch, and some of it, some of it's sunken, some of it's got potholes, and apparently, they're going over those potholes from the water.
They won't get paved until the spring.
Yeah, and they're.
And they always could, if they think they have a, an insurable accident, I would recommend that they put their insurance company on notice, so they can do that without any action from the borough. Tanya, do we have any information that what they, what's installed there now, and the paving associated with that and patching is contrary to the specifications that we approved for that work?
Yeah, the specifications for that are the PennDOT rates, because it is state road. And we just met last week, wasn't it, Donnie? We just met and spoke with all the parties involved, the trucking company doing the repairs. So there were, there's going to be PennDOT specs, but you're in the middle of winter, so you can't get hot mix down, you can't pave a road now.
I mean, the only other thing you could do is ask the, I mean, we could post, put up a temporary sign saying trucks, minimize the truck speed, where you put truck speed.
I don't think you can do that without PennDOT.
Yeah, it is a PennDOT road, yeah. Now, that's, yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what.
I mean, that would be ideal, because we all know, nobody goes, what is it, 35 out there? Nobody goes 35. They're coming in there at 50, you know, and they start hitting those. And I can see when your house is right off the road, you know, I'm in Constitution, and I still get, you know, some of those trucks out front, hit those, and I can feel it. Well, I can feel it from down at Marge Goodfellow, when they're down there with, with dump trucks and stuff. They just want to know whose responsibility it is. Should they contact the borough? Should they contact the, the company that's doing the actual work? Should they contact a combination of their?
I think, I think they're going to have to contact their insurance company and let the insurance work through it. I mean, if they can, I mean, the trucks aren't necessarily, I mean, they're just trucks going by, right?
You know, they're just, we've got, you know, a number of
I can't imagine.
18 wheelers that come into town for Crescent and other industries.
I can't imagine that you'd be able to narrow it down to a particular truck.
Oh, no, not, not a particular truck.
The paving meets specs.
So, Tanya, what you may want to do is just reach out to PennDOT, now, PennDOT's communication right now in COVID is horrible, but just contacting them that we've received a complaint and, oh, an observation is whether they can take some temporary speed limitations for trucks and see what they would be willing to do.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that would probably be the best, but if you can get the speed down, you know, put a speed limit, like speed ahead 15 due to hazardous conditions or something, so that they slow down before they get to the rumble streets.
Yeah, there may be an exception because of the construction and things that we're doing, but that's, that's a complaint, somebody got a hold of me about that. Another one was, I know you're going to order those valves. I have two people in town that have contacted me. They got a lot of brown murky water after their water lines were shut off, and now they're having the same problem I was. They have absolutely almost no water pressure, so if you can make sure that you let me know. I have two residents I need to get back in touch with for that. I don't know what we might want to do in the meantime. How long do you think it'll take to get those in, Donnie?
Oh, we should have them either next week or the following week.
Okay, that'll be fine. Let me know, and then they can contact their plumber to have that, have those put in. The only other thing I have is the carnival. I guess you've all heard, Shrewsbury went ahead and signed a contract with their vendor and took, took our carnival week that we've had for 60 years, and the Lions have decided to put it back a week. They, I will tell you, an argument did ensue between
I'm sorry, Kim, do we know why they did that?
No, we really don't. I mean, I, I haven't been told it was because the, the carnival people had, didn't have the other week available. I mean, they've always had that, not always had that, but they've had that week prior to us, seven, eight years?
They didn't always, excuse me, they didn't always had that prior to us. Theirs used to be the next valve.
Yeah, that's what I was going to follow up with, the last six, seven years.
Before the Lions Club here did it, so, you know, it's like they jumped in front, you know?
Once they did away with the firemen's parade, they couldn't get anybody to, that would organize the parade. So they said, well, that's, I think, what was it, the end of July, early August, they had it, and then they decided to do it the week before us, which, of course, our Lions weren't real happy about. But now, they took the same week. Well, it turned out, this will not happen again after this year. Our Lions have gone the week following, which is, I don't know, face ID, that's important.
It's a mask.
Yeah, I know. I lost it. It's the week after. It'll be the week after. That fireworks, I believe, are Wednesday and Friday of that week. The parade, Rec Commission has changed the parade to that Saturday, and I believe they've been in touch with the Lions to ask that the carnival grounds be open immediately following the parade, so we don't lose a lot of people here. Usually, that Friday and Saturday is the bulk of what they make. They make more the night of the fireworks than they do the whole rest of the week together. So Friday night will be the main event, fireworks, and then Saturday, the parade, which they are trying to get folks to sign up for. I'm sure, you know, they'll go out to the different fire companies and other organizations to do that. Other than that, IGA is still meeting, we're really making some progress at this point. Again, I've said something to Bruce, I want to go over those things. I appreciate your, your email response, that we can sit down and, and I can run some of those things past you, since you worked on that for about, what, a year?
Year and a half.
A year and a half?
Probably seems like five, though, right?
Yeah, seems like five.
It seems like that's when we started.
Yeah, but, and I don't know, another thing is Glen Rock, I don't, I think we got a letter from Glen Rock that they're a letter from Glen Rock that there were some major changes with their council. They voted to reorganize. There was a vote to reorganize, a motion made, seconded, passed, and Doug, Doug Young is no longer president of council. It is Roland Apgar and Victoria Rivera is vice president now. I don't know if Roland is going to stay on the IGA since he is president. He's mentioned it, but we will see. If not, they'll have to appoint somebody else to, to be on the IGA. It's going to be hard to get somebody to catch up on that, but that's, I think that's all I have.
Want to just go right into Police Commission because we kind of touched a little bit?
Oh, sorry. Oops. Oh, yeah. May I go back to water a minute? Is that acceptable?
Sure.
I would like to go back to water. When the water is turned off, do the people get a proper notice how long it is before that water is safe for drinking? And I am concerned about perhaps, I don't know how long it's been since we tested our water, simply because these meters are breaking down in people's water heaters and we have slush and everything. I'm concerned about the water in the borough. Does anybody here in the borough office drink water from the tap or do they bring, do you drink bottled water?
No.
Because I am concerned because with those, you know, with those meters and all that happening and people having to replace their water heaters more often, that maybe there's something, water is too hard and maybe we could address that and do something about it.
Water's not hard. I can tell you that because the water's not hard. And I think one thing that people have to do if they have a water heater is proper maintenance, which is flushing once in a while so it doesn't burn out.
Well, I did all that and I still have problems. Actually, I'm a fifth water heater.
It should be flushed, what, every, how many months? Every six months?
I don't know. You might have to ask.
I think, I was doing it like, well, my husband was, every six months we were doing it.
The water is not hard.
But I mean, there's something with, with this, you know, people are concerned and I thought, you know, is it a big expense to look at our water situation again and, and see?
The water, the water is tested whenever, it's, well, it is tested every month, but it's also tested as they put the lines in. It's tested at the line.
With all these lines, with all these things that are going on, is what I'm saying, is that affecting our water?
I'm telling you that the water is tested and passed as safe before the water's turned back on.
It is, okay.
And people, and people are having notification placed on their houses-
Yeah.
-that the water will be turned off. I've gone on Facebook, gone several paid places and recommended, you know, that if people see brown water in the area after knowing that there's been some, some work done on the lines, open up your bathtub, let it run. If you have to take off your aerators, take off your aerators, flush them out and, you know, just let it run till it runs clear. Don't do a load of wash, knowing that it's, found that out the hard way, you know, don't do a load of wash. Just let things run clear and start opening several faucets until your, until your lines are completely clear. And a lot of folks are getting air too. So, you know, you're going to get a rumble in your, in your lines. Let that settle down. It will. And as, as Dennis said, our, and Andy, our water is tested. I think that goes out to everybody in the borough, how many times a year.
Actually, by, by law, it has to go out. So everybody should know that the water is safe to drink and everything.
There's a question because of all this going on, people are, you know, we're just curious. Was the question was asked, I asked it and I got the answer. Thank you.
Yeah. What is our pH? Are we a natural bad-
The pH is what I wanted to ask.
The pH is probably close to seven.
Seven, two, something like that.
Seven, two?
That, that should be, that should be fine.
We, one of the, one of the problems that we had too is there was a great deal of water used from a fire hydrant whenever the field caught on fire over here and we got several complaints about that. And anytime you have flushing out from a, from a hydrant, you've got a lot of the silt and sediment that break free.
Is that what you wanted to say, Don?
Well, yeah, that's where your brown water is coming from. It's not from dirt. It's from the, the, you know, inside your pipes. So you have cast iron, you have valves and all this stuff has been proved years ago, but you have, you know, corrosion and stuff with the plates and that causes the brown.
Because they do a lot of work.
Till you get it flushed out. You have to put the hydrant, flush it, then usually it's good.
Yeah.
But it's, nothing's going to hurt you.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm 61, I'm still here.
Police Commission then?
Um, the February police meeting, the location was changed. They moved it to the Shrewsbury Borough Office and this was done so that we could have an in-person meeting and have a Zoom meeting as well. So instead of having the, the meeting last week, we pushed it back to the continuation date. That'll give us time to advertise so people will know. So it'll be the 16th, which is the third Tuesday. It'll be in Shrewsbury and I believe we made the decision to move March's meeting to Shrewsbury as well.
I guess I want to, I was talking, speaking with the mayor and one of the things that we would like to do and the mayor would like to do, and I agree, is they've spent about $1,500 on various equipment to, I think we have, we own a screen.
Screen's right there.
Yeah, the screen's right there. And I asked the mayor to put together a list of, you know, using Nate as a, an advisor and we would order the equipment to bring us up to the same level that is basically a Shrewsbury borough. And we may have to look at getting one repeater also to get our Wi-Fi up a little bit in this room because it is a little weak. So that would put us where we could do the Zoom meetings and the meetings could return here if we need to continue Zoom meetings far into the future.
Are they streaming their video there or do you know?
Yeah, they are. Yeah. So that would help you too with the, with the-
Yeah, I mean, you've got to have a portable computer to make, to make that happen.
Yeah, and they do, yeah.
Well, they, they need the computer for the Zoom meeting itself.
Right.
They're, what they do is they record the Zoom meeting. I don't think it's really, well, it is live if you want to zoom into the meeting, but it, it doesn't go out on Facebook or anything.
Right. It's, it's live, but then you can, you can replay the recording like we do now. So we don't need to do anything. I just wanted to let you know that, that it's coming in the future. I think it's a good thing. So, did you have anything to add, Ken?
No, I just think it's a, it's a good thing. We had discussed it probably about a year ago and we want to be able to make sure that citizens and residents of New Freedom have every opportunity. My famous statement was, and still is, we've got kids that are, they are having sports. My daughter's playing a game tonight. They're having practices. Parents are working in Maryland. They're getting home at 6 o'clock, making dinner, feeding their kids, doing homework, making sure homework's done. By that time, it's 9 o'clock. They don't have time to come to an actual meeting, but maybe while they're at home cooking, making dinner, if we get this done right and we can go on Facebook Live, they can actually watch it. If they have a question, set something up so that they can email in as we're having our meeting or ahead of time and answer their questions. I think we, they deserve to have every opportunity that we can afford them to be a part of this commotion sometimes.
Solicitor?
All of my items are later in the meeting, so I'm good.
Okay. Senior Center?
The Senior Center has hired an assistant executive director who started on January 18, 2021. Her name is Nicole Strassman and at this time, of course, they're still providing lunches to those people who want to drive up and get them, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. They were open during the first storm on the Monday, but during the second storm, they were closed Monday and Tuesday. And they still are a little bit lower in their numbers of people receiving meals as they drive through, but the Meals on Wheels are still going out.
One thing, Ian, I read in the report, they've, they've already started to get grants.
Yes, they have.
And that's something that we heard, so that's good.
And they've ordered a whole new system, an upgraded system for their computer so they can track data and, you know, share and they're sending out, I believe they're trying to send out newsletters that have activities in them now for the seniors because they haven't had as much that they could do.
Do those newsletters only go out to members?
I believe so. I know that they put things on the Facebook and they have a website. I'm not exactly sure how much they have on each of those. I apologize. I haven't looked at them recently. This lady started January 18th. I don't think they had done that much before, but I believe that they're shaping these things up.
To let, let folks know, older folks especially, that there is the lunch program available. I didn't realize that that, that I heard they had shut that down.
I've reported that every month that I've made a report.
Not, well, I know you do, but like I said, people in the community don't always read the minutes and I didn't know if they were posting.
Send it out to anybody who they have a email address for. They send all that information.
Okay, well, this, this too helps us let folks know that those services are still available, the, the lunch pickups and the, and the Meals on Wheels. With COVID, we've got a lot of older people. We've lost an awful lot of folks to be free of, to be honest with you. I'm not going to mention names because of HIPAA and everything else, but we've lost a lot of people to COVID in the area and in town. And older folks are afraid, still afraid to go out.
And we had talked before the meeting and you said that you might be able to set up a meeting with maybe Andy and myself and-
They have their monthly meeting this coming Wednesday out and I hope to participate through Zoom. And I know she, they wanted to meet with Andy Schaefer.
Okay.
We'll try to set up something, whether it's with the board that they want to meet or whether they just want to meet the assistant executive director. We'll, we'll get that to them.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, Ryan?
For Rec Council, there are some discussions about meeting with the mayor and Andy about some upcoming events with Stephen and history. They would also like to meet with Andy at their next meeting. Their, their past meeting was just this past Thursday. Lisa Apec, as we voted last month, has now joined the, the Rec Council or the Rec Board, as it were.
Rec Board or Commission, yeah.
Okay. So they gained one, but they also lost one. Jen Allen put in her resignation effective as, as of the last meeting. The reason given was that she's moving outside the, outside the borough. I would like to thank Jen for her seven years of dedicated service on that.
I actually sent her an email when, whenever you told me about it and thanked her for her service. She's definitely been, had an impact on the community.
Yeah, absolutely. Also, last month, we voted about having them move from seven to five members. That was much appreciated, especially given the, the current problems with the members that they're having in regards to the numbers. I think you already mentioned about the parade, but they are, they are still hoping to have that July 10th. The time that they're shooting for is 4:30. Mary answered that the tennis program, weather permitting, she's hoping to do April 3rd, starting that up, starting that up for the season. And that program will run, will run four to six weeks. And then that's, as I said, the date might change based on weather. Farmers Market, will not do the Farmers Market in February. They're going to wait to see how things are better with the weather and the pandemic.
Thank you. Dave, did you have, has there been a meeting with the rail troll or shop?
No, there hasn't. I mean, they, we, I met with them when they were putting up the ice stuff, but I didn't know.
Okay, did I miss anybody?
Yeah, Eric.
Everybody should have a copy of the report from the treatment plant. Excuse me. I'm not going to read all the, all the information on it, but they, they submit a report, the annual report has to go to DEP, it's an EPA report on their waste dollars, the renew and application to dispose the styles of minor landfills, getting a backup, that's the way it's laying applied, and working on it now that the chapter 94 is for. And everybody should, everybody should read it just so they can see what's going on. There's some new equipment that's been installed at the ordering equipment. And it's working pretty nicely, pretty well.
Is this available? Did we put this out for the public or?
It's attached to there.
It's attached to there. Okay, great. Great. Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, we're going to have a short executive session to discuss personnel litigation matters and we'll be right back. Okay, you're back. Okay, under business. Okay, we have advertised the property maintenance code and we can vote on that tonight. Are there any questions about the property maintenance code? Okay. This is an ordinance of New Freedom Borough, York County, Pennsylvania, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code. And that's all I have to say, right? And the ICC Property Maintenance Code, it's the 2018 edition.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion that we adapt ordinance 2021 number one.
Okay, I have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
And once we adapt this, it's in effect.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Where can one get a copy of what is your back to Bogal?
I guess it, it's available at, at the office for public inspection. So-
What area?
It's available at the front office for public inspection. So you can, if you want to stop by tomorrow.
Go in there, try to get.
It's available for public inspection or was, was advertised for public inspection. So if you want to stop by the borough office tomorrow and, and take a look at it, it's available to the public to, to review.
So your offices are closed?
You do it right to now. But here, just it's-
Is this-
That's it.
Is that all it is?
That's it.
Well, it is the 2018 property. Well, it is the 2018 Property Maintenance Code that's being adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. You have anything?
Okay, I have a motion in a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay. Uh, we have, okay, we have a rec ordinance, um, which we've talked about a lot. I need you back. You want to give them to me and I'll sign my part, you can sign yours later. Get a copy of the rec ordinance?
Yeah.
Everybody get a copy just for you.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I just was gonna hit, hit just the highlights. Um, basically this, uh, enacts, we, we never had an ordinance that, uh, put together a rec board. Uh, it was just done kind of ad hoc. Um, they said, hey, we should have a rec board and somebody said, I'll be on it and that's all that, that was ever done. So when we went back to find the actual ordinance, it wasn't there. So what we did was we put together a, an ordinance to establish, um, the Recreation Commission and, um, we did a few things that Recreation wanted us to do. We made their number of people between five and seven so that, um, they can get more people on their, on their, uh, board, but they also only need three or a simple majority, but a minimum of three to have a meeting. So that means that they don't have to have, um, all of the members there. So we defined that. Does anyone have any questions about this or? So any, does anyone have any questions in the audience?
I do have one question.
Sure.
Does it actually say that somebody has to be from the borough to be on this?
Yes.
Yeah, it's in the borough code.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I would, uh, like to go ahead and advertise this so we could vote on it at the next meeting.
Make a motion to advertise? I'm gonna make a motion that we advertise.
For now, second then. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, do you want to take the E O C plan?
Well, I didn't even know we were, I got two different, I got two different agendas. My first one had...
Okay, well, it's, it's to adopt the E O C plan.
My recommendation would be, my recommendation would be to, to call in the, um, our E O C coordinator and have him discuss it. He's gonna know a little bit more than I do. It was forwarded to him. I think I sent a copy out to everybody.
Right.
It, it is his plan. Uh, as of now, we have discussed, uh, previous about bringing, what's Stan's last name? Stan?
Yeah, I know, I know who you mean.
You know, I mean, he is to come in and give a presentation to us about going regional with our E O C planning so that we are combined with, I believe it's Glen Rock, Shrewsbury, um, and Jacobus so that we all fall under one entity. Um, as a matter of fact, I wanted to ask you, uh, can we put him on the agenda if he's available in that month's meeting to make that presentation?
Stan Walters.
Yes. Stan, because there's gonna be some other, um, things we're gonna have to do. We thought we were ready for it. Unfortunately, everything we have is analog. They won't go into digital when we originally looked at that. Uh, we do have two digital handhelds which would work, but I think we need to have him present to us. You have a copy of who is on the E O C currently from his update. That had not been updated since Jeff Joy was, was mayor in 2007. I asked him to, to update that, put new personnel in. Um, you have copies of that, um, and until we make any changes, that is, that's the way that would, would be. I would hesitate to do any follow-up. We're really supposed to have, uh, a, um, mock emergency drill every so often. I think we should wait until we've talked with Stan about...
Oh, can you go ahead and set that up then for the next meeting? Is there any reason we shouldn't have it? Next meeting at 6:30? Yeah, 6:30, next meeting, you'll be first and then, um, find out if he needs a screen set up or whatever, whatever he needs.
If he does, I'll make, I'll take care of it.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dan, okay. Um, I guess we've already spoken about, um, Jen Allen's resignation and wished her luck. And, um, the only other thing I wanted to mention, Ryan and I are going to meet with, uh, Recreation tomorrow night at, no, tomorrow afternoon at 3:30. Yeah, tomorrow afternoon at 3:30. Um, for a long time Recreation has, um, wanted to have a concert series similar to Spring, Spring at Berry and some of the other areas and, um, so what, what we're gonna talk about tomorrow is, um, maybe having that, that first concert and what they can do. Uh, we actually have a unique opportunity. The, uh, Joni Mason and myself are gonna sponsor the first band, so it'll be fun. It'll be a social thing. It'll be great, I think. There'll be beer, so it'll be good. So, so we'll, we'll have more about that. Um, the tentative date, actually, the date that the band is booked on is, uh, August 8th and they will be playing from, um, 6:00 to 8:00. And hopefully, again, Andy Schaefer pointed out that, um, the, depending on COVID, you know, we're, we're, hopefully Rec will be able to have games and kids' activities. Um, we even talked about it about themselves, but, uh, you know, depending on, again, COVID might, might be a problem. Yeah, can Andy leave?
Yeah, he was back there for himself.
Okay, I'll wait.
Where's the beer license come from for that, Andy?
Um, we're gonna, the VFW has a, I'm glad you asked that question because I can stall for time. Um, the VFW is going to be doing the beer stand and they have, uh, 12 uses on their license where they could go out into the community and have beer. So I was hoping the VFW is a fundraiser for their building and for, to help with the COVID relief would be able to do a beer stand and maybe do a 50-50 drawing, you know, and that, that'll go with it. And I've been very remiss and I apologize, but this is Andy Schaefer. He is, are, going to be our new borough manager. He is our new borough manager and, um, Tony will be training him or talking with him over the next couple of months. And he, I think he's a great addition for the borough. He comes to us from Spring Grove. He's got a lot of experience. Um, he has a good background in recreation, so that's gonna help, uh, with, uh, recreation in the area. Um, he actually has his sewer plant license, so, yeah, and he's working on his water license, so it'll give us some backup and some depth to a lot of, uh, a lot of our, um, public works stuff, so, uh, if you would, welcome him aboard. Okay, uh, now brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. Jenny?
Did we find out anything on the people who are, have water leaks that don't have them fixed and are wasting the water?
Oh, Summit Grove. Um, I, have we content, have we gotten that, have they gotten that?
Well, it said in here that Sir Woods was gonna do research to see if we could establish a timeline for...
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve and I, excuse me, Attorney Hollis and I communicated about that after last month's meeting.
Okay, yeah, the, the problem there is that, uh, water bill, uh, from Summit Grove is, I mean, they pay it, but it's, it's thousands of dollars and it's wasting an awful lot of water, so. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. So, uh, yeah, so we are, we're still looking into that.
Fair approach.
Sure. Just not too close.
I'm going to get here so that that camera can actually see me. I'm speaking to you tonight as the councilpersons and the mayor, and I'm also speaking to the residents and property owners of this borough. While you were in your executive session, I put where each of you sit, a copy of the comments that I'm gonna make tonight. I'm gonna read them into the record. Uh, more importantly, I've given you a binder. This binder is a copy of a second complaint that I have filed, that I have prepared, haven't filed it yet. It has a cover sheet and the cover sheet basically says, "I have two choices. I want resolution 2018-2 rescinded." You know that. I'd ask you to do it. If you choose not to, I'll ask a court to do it. My strong preference is that you do it. But if you don't, I'll ask a court to do it. And if I ask a court to do it, the borough is going to incur some litigation expenses which the residents and property owners of this borough are gonna ultimately wind up paying. It's my suggestion to the, all the residents and property owners of this borough that they should acquire a copy of this complaint, read it, and then they should decide and voice their opinion as to what this borough should do. Whatever it is, it is. I have a suggestion and I'd like to express my personal opinion as to a matter. A suggestion. My suggestion is that the council or the borough install a drop box in the lobby of the administration building. The borough's offices are closed and are likely to remain closed for a considerable period of time due to COVID. The utility box is meant for utility payments, not for general borough material. Since the borough's offices are likely to remain closed for a considerable period of time, there should be some way to provide material to the borough offices other than via the postal service. Lately, it has taken days to weeks for mail to actually arrive. A drop box will ensure the borough receives material in a timely manner. Personal opinion. In 2018, Franklin Land Investment asked the former council for a favor. Adopt resolution 2018-2. The proposed resolution, if adopted, would grant after-the-fact approval for Lamont's 2010 sale of two lots of ground adjacent to the Lamont Building and to Franklin Land Investment. It also would strip me of my right to contest that sale and my right to enforce two restrictive notes that were applicable to the two lots. Without any discussion, the former council adopted the resolution. The restrictive notes state that the sale of the two lots requires council approval. No one sought nor received council approval before the two lots were sold to Franklin Land Investment. In 2018, I filed a complaint in the York County Court of Common Pleas. One of the defendants was Franklin Land Investment. The purpose of the complaint is to determine whether Lamont's sale of the two lots was Franklin Land Investment introduced resolution 2018-2 into the court proceeding. Franklin Land Investment argued that the resolution grants after-the-fact approval for the sale of the two lots. Consequently, the sale of the two lots should not be set aside, is what they argued. It is my personal opinion that the resolution is legally infirm. No notice was provided to any of the borough's residents, nor were any borough residents given an opportunity to voice their opinion. I want the resolution rescinded. I have asked this council to rescind the resolution. I have also said that if this council elects not to rescind the resolution, that I will ask a court to rescind the resolution. I have provided this council with a copy of the complaint that I would file if the council likes not to rescind the resolution. Rescinding, rescinding the resolution cost the borough nothing. Defending the resolution...
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any, is there any other comments from the public? Anything else from the borough council? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. I have a second from Burnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.
You know what, we didn't have any dirty water, did we?
Yeah, there's times that they got dirty water and then they, kind of, they didn't have a break or they called the water, they shut down.
The season turned as well.
Yeah, so what we had that...
Because you're living in a valley, so it's all the valleys. All the, the river valleys are resilient. They don't get that western, like, resolved out.
You can turn your old valves and...
I got this one from somebody.
This was the lead.
No, it wasn't.